All right, so the minutes have been approved.
Yeah.
So whatever. All right, so the director's report. Let's go right to that. I guess I just, I usually do a little spiel at the beginning of it. I guess all I have to say this time is that the ability to continue with virtual meetings is a result of a passage of a law on February 15th by the governor that extends virtual meetings until July 15th of 2022. We're still able to have virtual meetings based on that. So, okay, let's go to the director's report.
With a fairly crowded agenda, would you prefer I not read it and people ask questions if they have them?
Right?
Whoops, somebody's coming. It's coming.
Coming in?
Oh, because now.
Okay.
Oh, Terry is, yes.
We met with James Charette today to discuss a number of things. Yeah, so I guess that for the benefit of those that weren't there, there's no definitive date for the start of the demolition and rebuilding of the sheet rock and rug in the area that was affected by the glycol leak. I think they were anticipating it sometime start in April. I guess demolition people are available to start now, but there's no guarantee when the reconstruction people can start, so there's no point in doing one. So they're really in sync with one another, so there's not a track of delay period of time. And we talked to him about a number of other things, working on fixing the front doors so that the both sides are the same, so that it's just one key that's necessary instead of now having to use two. He's going to look into motorizing the doors so that after hours, if the doors are locked, somebody on the inside in a wheelchair can exit the building without the assistance of somebody not in a wheelchair. So he's working on, and I guess we have to put on the carpeting that will be the carpet tile that will be used in the meeting room. And actually, when they do the carpet change in the area affected by the glycol.
Beautiful.
Staff has selected a color since they live with their day-to-day. We need to approve it so James can alter it and get that in motion. He's also getting final pricing on painting the building also. So he's moving ahead with a whole host of things. And it was good meeting with him. So that was that. So we want to have a motion to approve that carpet tile that was selected by the staff. The staff, it's kind of a bluish color in comparison to the gray that's there now, right? Terry, you're muted, Terry.
Terry, you're muted.
Terry is moving it and moving that carpet tile. And Alex, I did, all in favor of it? I, everybody.
Okay, good.
Okay, so anything else on this list that anybody wants to ask any questions on since we do it?
Where is the, where is that carpet tile going to be?
It's going to be, it's going to be in the community room. And then when they replace the carpet in the area that was impacted by the leak, they will replace it with a carpet tile also. And the plan going forward is eventually over time to change the rug throughout the building with that carpet tile. Carpet tiles are easier to work with in terms of if you have to replace something in the future, especially the high-traffic areas, you're just replacing tile instead of having to take up the whole, you know, wall-to-wall carpeting. So that was the intent. So that's where it'll be starting anyway. And incrementally over time, I guess it will migrate throughout the building.
If I have a discussion, just continue the color.
Yeah, exactly. That's a good point. That is a good point. So it could, we could have comparison and contrast going. That's as of today, that's where it's going to be. All right, so I guess maybe one of the things, Jean, you can talk to is the fact that we just learned within the past week that the children's librarian, the head of the children's youth services is leaving. It was kind of a surprise, I guess, and unexpected, so.
Yeah.
I guess we're going to talk about filling that position, so maybe you can talk about it in that.
Okay, yeah, and I did. There was something I wanted to add, two things I wanted to add to the director's report. And one is I've, I mentioned that programming is going to be slim for the upcoming couple of months because there's so much, obviously, for everybody to take on. But I did forget to mention in programming that there's a programming on New England lighthouses coming in May. Erin, do you have the date?
It is May 11th. Lighthouses of New England and the people who kept them.
Oh, okay. I think that would be very interesting.
Yeah, it should be. And it'll be live, live and in person.
Right, right.
Just like the gardening one.
Okay, okay.
So I think that was it. Plus, I did skip right over the budget, so we should go over the budget sheets.
Okay.
Onto that.
I did send out an updated one just before the meeting. I don't know if everybody got it.
I got it.
Okay, did you get it, Erin?
Yep.
Okay. As I said in the email, Erin input a bunch of invoices which really made these numbers outdated. So we're in reasonably good shape. We're at 60, I can hardly see that, 65% of the year has passed. We're at 63% for wages, which is good. That leaves us wiggle room, and of course, we'll gain some more wiggle room once the children's position is empty. Though we hope to get it filled as fast as possible. We're at 59% for library and materials coming from municipal funds. So it will be any day now where we have to switch over to, as a matter of fact, this, this is not, you know what? It didn't print out right. This actually is not correct. We're more like 80-something percent for, for library materials. So this is the time of year when we start going to the funds to cover our materials expenses. We're at 72% for this total budget. You know what I think I did? I didn't print out the new one for myself. That's how I messed up. So let me see if I can find it on my computer. Hold on one sec. Okay, yes, so we're at I'm losing it. We're at 65% of the year passed, 63% in wages and salaries. We're at 92% for library materials. So we've got roughly $4,000 to spend, so we have to keep a close eye on it. And now we're going to have to start paying for materials, books, DVDs, all of that from the funds.
Is that for the 17% or for 19%?
19, 19. Um, I keep losing it. Where is my screen? Hold on, okay. You can see the state aid funds there. I have we're, we're at about 50, well, 51% for what we spent on wages from state aid. We budgeted the full amount of 8,000. So that includes the increases for youth services and circ librarian, plus the extra that we pay, Erin, for the hour of administrative work. So we're at 51% for that. We rarely spend all of that. Usually, the municipal salaries, for whatever reason, we have extra in there. And we usually just spend that out, and then I take whatever we need from state aid at the end of the fiscal year. This year will be a little different because of the, the increases to both those, those salaries. So we'll, we'll see how it works out, but it's being closely monitored. And everything will be set up for Erin to continue to monitor that in May and June. I've got more or less updated balances on the funds from the town. It's still a little confusing because some of the account numbers don't seem to match up, and it's a little confusing as to what is spendable and what's not. But the balances that you see there are, are accurate for the most part. So, so you can see those all in orange. We've spent out what we budgeted from the Arthur Johnson Fund. We use that to purchase US Newsstream, which is all current editions of newspapers, which is a wonderful thing. Tell everybody you know all about it. But we haven't spent from any of the other funds, so we'll start doing that now. And that's all, you can see all the budgeted amounts in the left-hand column. That's what we budgeted. And I added in the Nade donation this year and the Lois Smith Fund down at the bottom, so we'd have a realistic amount for what we've got in the funds. And that's that number, the total down at the bottom. Any questions?
So Jean, when we, when we dip into the funds to buy library materials, is that satisfying the state requirement that of the 19? Okay.
They don't care where it comes from. It could come from the friends, it can come from any place. You just, they just want you to spend that much.
Okay. All right.
What, I have a question. Hold on, I lost my why does it say 17%? Is that a mistake?
17%, where?
In the top section, library, right, the library materials.
Oh, yes. Thanks for catching that. And I, now I see why Erin asked that. Yes, for a while before I had talked to Mary Rose Quinn at MBLC, I thought we would, we could reach for that 17%. I'm pretty sure it happened in the past, but she strongly advised me not to do that. So I will, I'm going to change that right now. Thank you for catching that.
I didn't catch it. I listened to Erin carefully.
Thank you, Erin, for catching. Yes, 19% it is. And I also enclosed, there's, there will be a discussion, I guess, about compensation for the director. So I sent out the staffing spreadsheet as well. So you all should have that. And I think that's all I have on the budget.
All right, any, any questions, comments, observations anybody wants to make?
I do have a question. It's not exactly about this budget, but I'm curious if we ever get a response, what the response from town was to our, our, our budget request.
As far as, I think, Alex, did you have a conversation with Tracy that it was indicated that she was putting forth what we had requested?
Correct.
We're going to get a new, a new, an extra person.
Yes.
Yeah, at this point, again, I, she qualified it, didn't she, Alex, saying that's what she's doing? But these things are fluid and they, they could change?
She phrased it as follows, Dick, that at the moment we spoke, which was at 1 o'clock on the 7th of March, she had forwarded our budget request to FinCom and the Selectmen to be fully funded as presented. So, Dick, that would, yes, yield up the extra half-person.
Okay, so let's keep our fingers crossed that it keeps moving forward like this.
It was encouraging that Tracy spoke about her caution in extending hours or increasing hours for staff in the library. She had resisted it in the past. She did not state that, but she had done so. She said, "I do not want to," and this is a paraphrase, "I do not want to increase hours at the risk of," because the risk exists that later they will need to be decreased, as has happened in the past. So that's where it hung as of two weeks ago yesterday. So I found it encouraging.
I requested a meeting with her. And because this is a busy season with budget, she's not able to do that until April 5th, which I think is the same day the FinCom is supposed to be. So I think Alex is going to come along with me, and we're going to sit down and talk with her and just get an update on where things are at and bring her up to speed on where we're at on a number of things. And just keep this lines of communication and flowing with information, so, you know. So that's, that's in the works. And so it's looking promising, Dick, I guess, is we can say at this point. And I think it, I think it was sufficient money in there too, Jean and Erin, if I remember correctly, that we wouldn't have to be tapping into the state, state aid for circ, additional money for the circ person and for the
Yeah, it covered all salaries plus the extra person.
Okay. So that, that then is going to, you know, free up some resources from, you know, state aid for, for other things. Or unless, kind at some point, you need to increase those salaries again to be competitive with, with other people. That's, that's obviously a, always the hound of a dilemma for us, you know. So it's good to have something in reserve that's needed going forward. Okay. All right, anything else on the director's report that anybody wants to discuss? Okay, so the next item is staffless compensation for the incoming director. Good, while she's sitting here. I, I guess I asked that to be on there so that we at least start conversation and start thinking about it. We got, since it doesn't have to be in effect until May 1st, I thought it would give us an opportunity to, to think about this and have a discussion at some point. And maybe even as I'm falling around in my head, maybe we put together another subcommittee to investigate this and come up with a recommendation going forward. See where we stand in comparison. And I don't have full depth of knowledge in terms of what others are doing, other than what I see in the newspaper periodically. Now, so that we're, so that we're competitive with others and going forward that way. That's the reason it's there. It doesn't mean we have to come to a conclusion tonight. I just wanted to get this discussion going. For discussion.
Dick, I just wanted to interject in the beginning that I reviewed our budget request because I had done it back in December, and I had to refresh my mind. And the salary for the director will be that amount that you had wanted it to be with the COLA.
Okay, that's about 65? Okay, all right. So I, I guess I voiced this opinion to some of you, just not in a formal way. But I, I felt that the range for the position should be 60. I think I put it in that email. The, the range should be probably 60 to 65. And I personally was inclined to, it was the higher end, so that we, in fact, were competitive. Alex, I think you mentioned to me today that you had seen some stuff from places that were comparable or even maybe smaller than us, where salaries were in the 70s and 80s. Great Barrington, wherever the place was out there.
Belcher Town or some such, you know.
You know, the middle of nowhere, wherever that is.
There's actually a very big, there's a big difference between Belcher Town and, and Great Barrington. If you've been to both places. Barrington is a very artistic town full of, full of New Yorkers.
Yes.
There, so they're going to have, they're going to have
We have the resources.
Resources and interest that's different from our town.
True, true. So I, I think it's basically, you know, kind of we, we need, oh, I guess my bottom line is we need to be competitive. I, you know, I know Amesbury is bigger than us. They just, I had the director at, what, 82 or 83 or something like that, so, you know. So I throw that out on the table for, for discussion and see where you want to go with it, you know. And I'm sorry to have this conversation where Erin's sitting here, and that was not, that was not the intent.
If you want me to log off and log back on, I can do that.
Do what you're most comfortable.
I, I do have a question, which is that, that at our last meeting, we offered the job to Erin, and she accepted. But is that pending firm salary review or, or is it, what, what, and I just, you know, need to know what it ma, what it means since, since usually these things are decided all in one go.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I don't know, Erin, if you wanted to interject at this point.
Sure, it's, I, I looked at it as pending an offer letter that contains information on salary and benefits.
And a contract.
Yeah.
Contract.
It is a contractual position.
And, you know, Alex had put together a draft of the letter. So, and I think in the draft, you know, and I I, I guess ask the question, are we in the ballpark in terms of meeting what you, your expectation? But though for me, without saying what the firm number is, but that 60 to 65 range needs with your approval and acceptance.
It does. It does. I've, I've mentioned probably before to a lot of you individually that, like, like Jean, when, when Jean became director, when you look at the whole budget, it's one budget. And I, I want to make sure the rest of the staff gets as close to a living wage as possible. So that's a, a goal and
Absolutely.
And happy staff will make me happy as director, so there's a balance there that, that I look at.
So, and that, I think, is, is broader conversation, I think, going forward to look at. And I think that was the move we, we tried to make with the head of circ and the director or the head of children's services.
Yes.
Be sensitive to that need.
Yeah.
And I think that was what our goal was there. And I, knowing the board, I think that is the, the goal going forward, too, is to always be cognizant of that when opportunity presents itself. To make that, I mean, even if the budget gets approved, the way it's presented, going forward, it may be something you, you want to consider six months into the year and, and a, you know, broader discussion, more evaluation and assessment of where they're at in comparison to others, and you may want to, you want to boost something at that point. And you'll have the state aid available to do. Okay, so that's always there. I mean, it's always that safety net that's available to us. But, you know, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Anybody has any, one way or the other, how you want to proceed with this? I have no problem making a vote or putting it off and together a an offer plan and, you know, go forward. Because the other issue that we wanted to, this will be discussed if at all possible, we wanted to make an offer on vacation time also. That has to get clarified through the town. That will happen on the, on the at the rest of that. We'll know, that'll be clearer is what we're talking about. I personally think we, we should be able to offer whatever we want if it's a contract. Doesn't have to be stuck in the town policy. But I need somebody to tell me that from the town who stands for this.
But what, just clarify for me, what are the steps needed before we can make the formal, send out the letter?
I think we, I think since we can make, we, I guess we could send out the formal letter and with a salary. The issue of the vacation time can get factored in on the 5th. And we can, whatever, whatever the end result of that is, that can get factored into the, into the contract. Because that's the, the real document that's going to be going forward, so. So I think if, if we are in agreement on the salary, we can finalize that, the letter can be sent out or handed to her, or however we want to work this. And, you know, and then clarify the issue on, on the vacation time. And I really, I think that's the only outstanding issue that needs to be addressed. You know, so, and that will be able to do beginning of, of April, have the contract in place before. So if, if, if the 65 number works for everybody, if that's something you want to vote on and put that to rest, let's get a motion in the second, and we'll move forward from there.
I move that we establish that the salary at $65,000.
You have a second? Terry seconds it? Okay, all in favor?
I
Well, members present, supported. Okay, so that's put the rest. And so the letter will be put together and we'll go from there. All right? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Job searches. Who's looking for a job now?
I am.
And I'm hiring.
Do when we tie him in, yeah. All right, so the assistant director position, since Erin is moving up, what's the status of that?
I'm going to let Erin answer that because she's been pretty much spearheading that.
Okay.
Well, we have, coming up this week, we start interviews on on Tuesday for the AD position. And I'm also interviewing someone on Wednesday for the youth services position, as those, those resumes are starting to come in as well. So we are getting our druthers together and our questions and figuring out what, what we want to get out of these people during the interview process and find out and learn about them. And we'll keep you posted.
Has, has the salary range for the assistant director been established?
Yes, and that's at $27 per hour. It's not a salary range. It's an hourly wage.
An hourly rate?
Yes.
So it was advertised at that rate?
Correct.
Yes.
And we, well, the youth services will be what Katie was at at this point.
24.
Before.
How much time do we have before Katie's gone?
Her last day is, is next Thursday.
Yeah.
You can get a discount on goodbye cakes, I guess.
Two for one.
Yeah. All right, so you, you've got some viable candidates for both positions.
We do, and in the meantime, Katie McGann and Emma Cashman are part-time staff, have, have stepped up to the plate to help out, to make sure we're fully staffed when dealing with absences. When dealing with absences or vacancies.
Anything else you want to add for, for those two topics, assistant director, the services?
I, just to let you know that the entire library world seems to be imploding. There are so many jobs available right now. Every day in our email, we see four, five, six. All over the consortium, all over the state. It's wild. And a lot of directors retiring.
The great resignation that.
Yeah. 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 Definitely happening.
Yeah.
Is that gonna, that gonna impact on us in terms of being competitive with other people?
Yeah, it will. More so, I think, with the AD position than with the youth services. But it will, but you know, we, oftentimes you get people that don't want to work in a large, busy library. Or, or people that want to work close by. So, you know, it's, it's a balancing act.
With just that salary, if need be, not to be competitive?
If it comes to that, if we don't have any, any candidates by the time I leave in April, we may want to consider that.
You know, just to plant the seed mentally, we've got to think about, you know, that is a possibility going forward. If you, if you found somebody who was very much, you know, the person that you wanted. And then when you really got serious about talking about salary and slotting and they may be, there's that many positions available. These people are probably applying at multiple locations.
Yes, yes.
All right. And just mentally having a game plan in place if this drags on longer than we anticipate.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. Let's go to the Lois Smith Fund update.
Do you want to talk about it, Dick, or do you want me to?
Bill, I, I, I was in the chain, but I, you know, I will probably talk about it.
Well, it's after, I had to wait a little while, but I finally heard back from the people at the ECCF, Essex County Community Foundation. And their explanation was that. They can only release the funds to another five oh one C three. So that would be the Friends of the Library. They, they claim they cannot release those funds to a municipality. So that means we're looking at the funds going to the Friends. What's that?
That's where they were originally.
That's where they were originally.
Well, but in a different format, right? Because the Friends managed an endowment.
I know they, they weren't, it was just a check that sat there. It did, it wasn't, it wasn't behaving like an endowment when they had it.
Okay.
It was just plunked there and then we made it into an endowment or fund at ECCF.
Okay.
But they, at that time, they weren't, they weren't keen on, on holding on to the, to that. Amount of money that was earmarked for technology specifically. But, you know, I think something can be worked out fairly well. Now, I just, you know, I would feel, I would feel better if, if the funds were completely at the. The pleasure of the trustees or whatever, if, if the trustees were the ones that would have the access to it. But it will have to be a relationship with the Friends where we'll have to figure out the parameters and, and how that'll work. But, you know, it's certainly doable.
I mean, is it, is it, well, is it possible that the Friends could transfer the money to the town?
That I have not found out about. So I guess I could put out that query.
I mean, it may not be something that one of us, as long as, if, if the Friends have it, full of management of it. It's clearly understood that the money is to be spent by the library for our technology. And that's what the endowment was for, that the decision about how it gets spent rests with the library, not with the Friends.
Right.
As, as you go forward and you make decisions about, we're going to spend X, Y, and Z for whatever piece of technology is the need. There's no question on the part of the Friends. They just write the check for it or they place the auto for it and provide us with whatever it is that we're asking for. So I think that's the kind of conversation we need to have.
Yeah.
Means with them, if it is something that they can, if they're just a pass through from the fund, it comes to them. Then it just gets transferred to the town for utilization by us then it's no problem. Then it's managed like any of the funds. I guess that's still a, needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I, I made the assumption, which may not be accurate, that if one five oh one C three can't turn it over to a municipality, then the Friends wouldn't be able to either. But that may not be true and they, they could make a donation of, you know, they could just make a donation perhaps. You know, it's one penny short of what's in the fund or something.
And that could be, the fact that the Essex County folks couldn't do it, it may be something in their bylaws. National structure that, that restricts them from, from doing that. It may not be statutory. So I think that's what we need to find out.
Yeah, that's, we'll find out.
Okay. And I think there was what, around twenty-six thousand dollars available there?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the wheels have been turning, I think, on terms of how you would want to utilize some of that funds once it becomes available.
Yes.
All right. All right. So want to elaborate on that at all so that everybody knows what you're thinking about?
Well, that would be Aaron's wheels turning. So she should answer that question.
Sure. Well, I have the town's IT contractor, Jake, looking into something like. A, a technology annual report in a way. So that we have an idea of what pieces of equipment are going to need updating or replacement and when. We already know we have a couple of things that need it now. And then we also struggle with getting help, technology help. You know, Matthew, who is the IT person at Town Hall, has been wonderful, but he's working for all departments. And is very busy. And sometimes we need, we have more urgent matters or fixes, repairs. So it would be helpful to have a budget to be able to hire Jake on our own. To come in and pinch hit when we need it and things like that, just with. Things like security and keeping patrons when they're using our systems, keeping them and their data safe. Is, is important and where it isn't our area of expertise. It would be good to have somebody on a regular basis who's, who's, it is their area of expertise. Kind of taking a look at things on a monthly basis. So we're talking about that. And that would be ongoing.
And, and tell me if I'm wrong, Aaron, but there are two issues. I mean, there are two major issues. One is the hardware issue and the other is the software issue.
Yes.
And, I mean, I just happened to read something, you know, the, there's now Windows eleven as an example.
Yes.
But not every computer can run it. And even if you can run it, you may not want to because it's a resource high. So it's a co- complex issue. But on the other hand, Windows ten is going out of circulation, I think by twenty-twenty-five in terms of security. So we're at, you know, we're on a timetable.
Right.
It may seem like miles away, but it gets closer by the minute.
It does.
That's just a process we all have to be up to date with.
And like when we had to move up to Windows ten and they kind of decommissioned Windows seven, what, what that means is that they stopped. Supporting it. They stopped fixing bugs and things and it makes, makes things much less secure to use. And as for staff computers as well.
That's a good point, Dick. And, and just being, even if it is twenty-twenty-five, that's going to be here before you know it.
Yeah.
And, and things are gonna, steps are gonna have to be taken along the way. Ensure that when that happens, you know, your proper pieces are in place. So having somebody around that can be helping you may take those steps, I think, is, is probably critical.
Right.
Okay.
And the other thing that's going to come down, down the pike, usually people kind of give their website a once-over, if not a full re-haul every five years. And so we will, as technology changes and as we're able to offer new services to patrons through the website. We'll be wanting to take another look at, at our website and if it makes sense and its usability. And, and that's, you know, that's a decent amount of money.
Have uses for that Lois Smith one?
Yes, I have lots of uses.
I just, I do have a question about. If it's a town employee who's already gotten assignment to a certain extent. Then on their own time, they can still be hired by a town agency?
No. So Jake is not a town employee. He's a contractor or a consultant in a way.
That is the only IT person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. For the whole town.
Oh, town. Jake is somebody he uses to support him in meeting the need of the town, right?
Yep.
And so we have kind of a, a, a technology budget that's covered there. But that's, you know, this big. And then we have things that go beyond that, that we need to cover on our own.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions on Lois Smith Fund? Okay. Next thing is credit card purchases. Okay. All right. Cash only. All right, Jane. Explain this one.
I pretty much said it last week. You know, I was trying to plant the seed last week. I was hoping that perhaps you would have had a chance to meet with Tracy before tonight, but. The bottom line is I'm going to be removing my credit card from quite a few accounts. And the desire is not strong from the person replacing me to have to put hers on there. And there are, there are ethical, we feel, reasons why that shouldn't have to happen in the first place.
Exactly.
So.
By, by way of explanation, give us a little background. Why, why is your credit card being utilized for these accounts?
Because there are so many things to purchase, primarily software products, which we used a lot during COVID and other things. Adobe, where we had the Minecraft thing, although we're doing away with that. The, they don't have any kind of net thirty system, you know, that you can't ask for an invoice and pay them within thirty days. You have to use a credit card. So that was. The town doesn't have a credit card. They had one, I guess, once from what I understood. And it became very labor intensive and they didn't want to do that anymore. The, it all kind of started with the Amazon account and that was before I was director. When I realized that there were things that the library could order there. But the only way we could get that started was if we had a, a credit card attached to the account. So I attached mine. And then the town got wind of that and everybody's like, oh, we're all going to use Amazon. The next thing I knew, everybody's ordering on Amazon and it's my credit card that's on the account. And there really wasn't any way to undo that, that anybody wanted to take the time to figure out. That I get emails once in a while from Amazon Business. Sounds like it might be a way to do more of a net thirty. System, but it, it never really got pursued. I didn't really have the time to pursue it. And in terms of the prime. Which I think is going to be billed this month, actually. It has to be billed to a credit card. So that would be mine. So when I spoke, I'm sorry, what? When I spoke with the town accountant. I, she seemed to think that they would find somebody else to. You know, use, use their credit card. I'm not sure exactly how, what her plan is. But I just feel like there should be some ideas tossed around. I do, I do know that other towns do have town credit cards. Dick, you've talked about the college having one. So it's not, something's going to have to be worked out.
We had, college had credit cards that were obviously in the state's name. We utilized to do things online. They had gas cards for us to, if we were using the, the college vehicle. Took the credit card, the, the college credit card and put gas in it, you know? And we gave the receipt to the appropriate person and.
Yeah.
I, I, I can't see why they would be asking any individual to attach their own personal credit card to, to the business of town business. I, I have a problem. That was one part of the conversation that we were going to have with Tracy, which we will and will be part of it. Because your credit card is going to get pulled and Aaron is not going to attach her credit card to it. Okay. So they're going to have to figure out how to solve this problem.
My hope is that the idea of a library credit card would, would make sense somehow, be doable.
Makes sense.
With a cap, you know, it'll be capped so it can't.
Right.
I just took two seconds. Amazon Business does have net thirty.
It does?
It does. So, so then the question is, what other benefits accrue to shopping with a credit card?
Well, the prime, the prime, I don't know if they would invoice prime when I, because I did try to unattach my. Credit card at one point, but that was several years ago. You know, I don't know if they still require that.
You're talking about prime because you want speedy delivery? Is that why we want prime?
Well, free delivery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the bigger issue here is that the way of doing business has changed. It's not going to slow down. The way of doing business is more and more online. I bought a house online, you know, like the wave. It, you know, we did all of the documents, you know what I mean, online. So it, it's, it's the way things are going. I think it's only going to get harder and harder down the road. To keep trying to do the purchase orders or, or invoicing in that way. So I, I think it would be, it's a good issue to, I, I don't mind taking it on, you know, so much. I, I don't want to be, I don't want my credit card to be the town having access to. Or, you know, whoever is, is working access to my credit card information or however that works. I don't mind, you know, expensing things and then submitting things for the library that are, you know, on it in that way, but it is a security thing. So between the security and the way we're headed towards the future. Doing business online, it seems to make sense and now seems like the right time to make that change if it's possible.
Yeah.
Have to come up with.
Amazon has business prime.
Great.
Okay.
I'm going to send you a link.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dick.
That is one problem solved right there.
Well, the, don't get to it far enough. So we have to convince the town.
Jean, is the credit card only used for, for Amazon?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like, you know, I don't get all, everybody's purchases on my credit card. It's just the credit card that's on the account, that's associated with the account. It's not, it's not like my, you know, I, I see everybody's purchases. I get all the emails and all the, the, you know, emails regarding all the products people are buying. But, and I forward them to the departments if, if I think it's important. But it's just, it's just sort of sitting there. It was the way that, that we had to open the account in the first place. But that was probably seven years ago.
But we do buy other things with the credit card, like our Acuity software management is a monthly charge. That allows people to sign in, to use computers and to have statistics on that. And, you know, it's not a lot. I think it's. that allows people to sign in, to use computers and to have statistics on that. And, you know, it's not a lot. I think it's twenty-five dollars a month or something like that, but.
So every month I have to, you know, put in for reimbursement, which is fairly time consuming.
Right.
Adobe, we pay for, Hootsuite, I pay for a couple of other things I can't think of right now.
So but my question is, if if we were able to do, get an Amazon Prime account business paying net thirty. Would we be able to transfer all the these other accounts? Might similarly, there's gotta be a way that Adobe wants to sell to businesses net thirty, their, you know, business to business.
Yeah.
They may have a library, a special library department. So it's certainly, if there are only a handful of accounts where this is important. Plus plus Amazon, which is deep, but one place, that we may be able to get away from needing a credit card.
Yep.
Which would be my vote, because it's cumbersome and 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 kind of ridiculous. So but it but it'll take a little more startup time in in researching all this, so.
Yeah.
Aaron, you wanna lean on me for some of this and we can talk about it? I'm happy to be your partner in investigation.
Thank you, okay.
Oh, excellent. All right, any more on this? All right, next item, long-range planning process.
So the survey went out, I think it was the Friday before last. Um, it went to all the outlets. We we wanted to do our email, our website, um, social media. Um, I had sent it to the town, but Matt got busy and it didn't go out. And so I was getting very discouraged because we were getting very poor response rates. So he did send it out yesterday. Maybe some of you got it in your, um, town email. And this morning I woke up and I had ninety-five responses, whereas the day before I had twelve. So so that was nice. I haven't really had a chance to go through them all. Um, but I think it will be very helpful for, as as Aaron said, it it is kind of an accidental marketing tool. So I think it'll be very helpful. And I'm hoping that I will be able to, um, compile the information and get the survey to a point where it can then be taken to the next level, which will be um, drafting the long-range plan. So that's what I was hoping to do, and we're we're pretty much on schedule to do that.
Yeah, I didn't get that email from the town, actually. I got, the last email I got from the town was the one that the friends wanted new board members. I don't know if everybody else got it.
No.
Yeah, did anybody else? You didn't get it?
No.
No.
Well, it's on the website. Um, maybe he, hmm.
Yeah.
I'm not certain if I got it, to be honest. So I will look into that.
I know, um, when I was talking with Dennis and Alana today at the library, she commented that she got it.
Okay. Maybe not everybody's.
I don't know.
Is everybody signed up for the town email?
Yeah, I got the last one, uh, in March on the Friends Board Members.
She mentioned something.
It could go into spam.
Yep.
Hmm, all right, I'll talk to Matt about that.
Well, you obviously, if you're getting responses, it's it's out there, so, you know, it's good.
Yeah, but if it it hasn't gone to everybody, we might get more, so.
Right, I I I say that I've seen.
Yeah, it's not a my spam. Yeah.
Okay. Look into that.
I didn't send it back, I'm not sure. All right, any anything else on the long-range plan?
Uh, no, I don't think so unless anybody else has anything.
Uh, under other business, Alex. You had, uh,
The rug.
The rug. Yes, the blank carpet.
Not yet. We'll work on elevating it, huh?
Work on that one, all right.
Yeah.
Why don't you give a, bring people up to date on what that's about?
Last week, Jean?
Yes, last Saturday, uh, two Saturdays ago, sorry.
A, um, Newbury resident, perhaps a Byfield resident, I'm not sure, came to the library and donated to the library a hook rug, which her great-grandmother had crafted back in the nineteenth century. A representation of Byfield and Byfield Center during the the latter part of of the nineteenth century. I sent you guys photos. Did they come through?
Yeah, it looks gorgeous.
Doesn't it, though?
Yeah.
And I attached those photos to a forwarded message from Susan Edwards, who had been the director at the Museum of Old Newbury until last summer, when health compelled her to retire. Um, and she's recommending there first that we detach the thing from the oak plank or whatever the plank is, to which it is attached. And I will tend to that if y'all are agreeable to that. And, um, secondly, she gave us a contact information to announce it in the Andovers entitled, um, Museum Textiles, which we could contact them, ask them to, uh, come on board, take a look at the thing, perhaps clean it and perhaps guide us to the next step, which I do think we want to try to display this thing in some fashion or form. Much like the quilt that's behind you there, Erin, in your office or meeting zone room thing there, which you were reverting to. But anyway, um, you know, ideally, and I mentioned this to a couple of you, it, I I can envision it being mounted in within glass and hung up high on the wall in, uh, in in the main room of the library. But first things first, um, shall we go ahead with, um, getting the plank off of it or getting it off the plank? And secondly, shall we contact Museum Textiles and and have them come out and have a look at things using for these efforts a portion of the N A I D donation, which was made to us and a part of which we've already dedicated to the use of a, uh, to the payment, rather, of a an archivist going forward with, um, review and analysis of the, uh, collection in the history room. Anyway.
You're gonna contact, uh, historic materials place?
Yes.
Don't take it off the plank yourself. Wait till they look at it. I would not do that yourself.
Yeah, I agree. We don't, you don't know how it's attached and you could
Right.
you could damage it unintentionally.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's it's sort of sewed onto a piece of Velcro, to be honest. The, um, the gentleman who brought it in, and it was already starting to slip a little, so.
Good point. Yeah, so if if I think it's it's a worthwhile endeavor and and it's consistent with the utilization of the money we've already authorized, it's keeping with historical, um, preservation of, uh, of a historical item. Uh, you know, so I think it's, you know, I don't know what kind of value, what kind of money we're talking about at this point, Alex. So do we, we want to get a, uh, a proposal from them, uh, have them come in and evaluate and tell us what it the cost to do it, and then we can authorize the the money for them to do it. I think, uh, maybe a motion just to to have the, what is it, the Andover the title of the
Museum Textiles?
Museum Textiles come in and evaluate, uh, the donated, uh, whatever it's called, propena, hook rug.
Is it a hook rug, Jean?
That's how they describe it, yes.
Okay.
Hook rug, okay. Is there a a motion to do that?
Why, I, one second. If we're not spending any money yet, do we have to have a motion? Can it just be done?
I guess, yeah, yeah. I, you know, I don't think, yeah.
I I think we have to move on financial matters, but I don't think we need to vote on on exploratory.
Okay.
Yeah.
That works, that's good.
One less thing for me to have to type into the minutes.
You're a practical man.
Yeah.
Well done, Dick.
No, I.
Um, the the other thing that Alex and I were talking about is, um, it'd be wonderful to write them a thank you note. She included a lovely note. There it was a lovely couple, um, with with the item. And I know Margaret used to, I mean, I'm happy to write a note, but I I thought it would be so nice to come from the trustees. So I didn't know if anybody wanted to volunteer.
I.
Good, Terry.
All right, Terry, all right.
She she also hopes to bring in some more things. They they just moved that following Tuesday to Brooksby Village, so they had an enormous amount of things they they needed to find places for. So they, she has some more ephemera of Byfield and and the areas that she wants to bring us. From her grandmother, who was a Brown, but not related to Dorothy Brown, who painted the pictures in the library.
So maybe, Terry, when you write her, you could ask her which Brown? What her grandmother's, great-grandmother's name was and where she lived in town.
Yeah, because I I did not, I didn't get that from her. We were closing and I didn't get all the information I wanted.
You can't.
Okay.
It's a scrambly time.
Okay.
Yeah, you could, that's great, Terry. Thanks. Okay, so I'll talk to Museum Textiles and we'll get that ball rolling. That's great. Thanks, Dick. And thanks, Terry.
And I can send you her address and all that information, Terry.
Where is it now, the rug?
It's laid out, um, on one of the tables. It looks lovely.
Yeah, I'll come and look at it, too. I'm not writing it tonight.
I had a chance to see it today. It's, it really is fascinating just to see the amount of patience and attention to detail to put something like that together is absolutely amazing, you know?
And it truly does depict scenes from Byfield.
Byfield, yeah.
I think Alex is still trying to, uh, document or prove.
Visual speculation, Jean, that's all I have so far, but.
Well, any, is there anything else anybody wants to talk about, so, going forward, other than?
Aaron has asked me to draft a, a release, I guess, uh, from the trustees about the upcoming dislocations at the library. I'm gonna reach out to you by email for some bullet points that I can know.
Okay.
What I'm talking about. So I'm gonna do that tomorrow, I think, but I'm just letting you know.
Great.
Good idea.
Yeah, the the friends are going to, um, start or need to start communicating with their their, um, subscribers to their newsletter and whatnot. We won't be able to keep, um, the book sale room open because it will be under construction. And so we won't be able to take, in all likelihood, book donations any longer while this is all happening, because we don't don't have a place to sell them and we don't have a place to put them to begin with. Um, so that's probably just gonna have a little bit of a hiatus. Um, but in their communications, they were hoping to be able to point towards a more official statement.
Aaron, are the friends able to document, document, um, their success through the bookroom, monthly revenue, annual?
Yeah, I I think it's somewhere around a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars a month that they bring in from that room.
Can they document it?
It, they do have it documented every month.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Well, let's fold that into the insurance claim. Loss of use.
Okay.
We can let them know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Give us the papers. Let's get it in. Worst thing that happens is the insurance says, no, you have no loss of revenue. But if we do.
Pretty, it's pretty regular. Um, yeah, okay, that's great. Thanks, Alex.
Great. So should we pick a date for our next, uh?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Should it be sooner rather than later?
Yeah, at one point I thought we should do two in April just because of all the changes, but I I don't necessarily, that, I mean, I don't, it doesn't have to. It's up to you if you want to.
If we schedule two weeks out and in a week or ten days prior to time we would need to post, we can just waive off if it does not appear necessary. Dick, what do you think?
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
So much going on.
Yeah, yeah, no, just to stay, uh, stay in communication, um, keep things moving. And and as things pop up, and I'm I'm sure they will over the next month, so, um, you know.
You wanna do April sixth or April thirteenth? Both Wednesdays?
I can't, I can't do April sixth.
Okay, April thirteenth.
There we go.
That's three weeks from now.
Okay.
That's good.
And what, uh, I I will send, obviously, an email out to everybody, Alex, and I will send a mail kind of recapping whatever our conversation with, uh, uh, Tracy is on the, uh, the fifth of April, so that everybody knows what transpired there. Go forward from there, okay? Excellent.
That's good.
Got a motion to adjourn? And seconded it, okay? All right, I, oh, you need things signed tomorrow?
Uh, yes, we do. It can be tomorrow or Friday. I will not be here, at least in the morning tomorrow. I can't hear anybody. Can any, something went mute. Did I go mute? No.
No, I can't hear either. Yeah.
I think I, oh, no, I didn't go mute.
Am I talking? Can you hear me?
Yep, you're fine.
Is it, is is it payroll tomorrow?
It it is payroll, yeah. And I think I've got everybody, so you're welcome to come in. I'm not sure if I will be here.
All right, I may come in and do it, uh, in the morning around. I mean, do you have a timeline that this is supposed to be submitted to Town Hall?
It can be, uh, submitted anytime before, by Monday. It can be submitted as late as Monday is what I'm trying to say.
Right, so if I come in like eleven, eleven-thirty or something like that, that's okay.
Okay.
All right, why don't I figure, let's let's shoot towards eleven o'clock.
Okay.
It seems to be my hour, so.
Okay.
You'll be there tomorrow afternoon. I can come and see the note and all the rug and the person's note.
I'm hoping to get here by the afternoon, but I may not be able to, so, um, it's right here on my desk.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Have a good rest of the week, everybody.
Yeah, you too.
Enjoy it. Stay warm, stay dry.
I guess, one of the things we'll have to discuss between now and the thirteenth, is that gonna be an in-person meeting or a virtual meeting? Reference?
So, are you always virtual?
Virtual? Does that work, still work for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's figure it out being virtual then.
Okay.
Okay, okay, all right. Take care.
Bye, everybody.